At 8:30 a.m.
The judge is to comply of the United States of America and through the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Censor.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Ostergaard. Russo.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Um censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Question carries.
Public comment. Is there any public comment?
Okay.
Holton Lake delegated authority update.
All right, um where do we start? Yes. The flood survey around the lake has been commencing. All of Iroquois has been done. They've been working on that for the past two weeks. Um they should be jumping off Iroquois, well kind of swinging around the southeast lobe down there on Holton Lake and should be up probably on Old Trail Drive, middle of the day Thursday into Friday. Um that's been going pretty good. Um if ice holds on the lake, it can even go faster because then they can set up a gun on the ice and hit a whole bunch of houses. Um that's about it on that. We have an advisory board meeting set up for Holton Lake. That is going to be Monday, the sixteenth at 6:00 p.m. And that's going to be at Lake Township. All there. 6:00 p.m. And that's going to be hybrid. They'll be open to anyone. If if the county wants, I can post like a Zoom link if other people want to sit in on it. Um Stacy thought it would be best to be present for that one, so she'll be present via Zoom on that one. Um as far as Holton Lake, we're at the first rounds of back and forth with the engineering firm on the reapplication letter for the Eagle Grant for 2025. Uh that is due on this Friday, actually, so we'll probably do one more round and have that turned in probably Thursday evening. Oh, I'm trying to think of something else. Holton Lake right now. I think that's about it. Do you guys have any questions? Yep. Yep.
Stacy's going to attend?
Yep.
Is that by your choice?
Uh it'd be nice to have any, I think, the combination of she recommended it and I don't think it's a bad idea in case there's questions pop up being the first meeting that I can't answer.
Okay.
Yeah. It's better. Uh any other questions?
Survey they're doing. Fixing the ground?
They're doing, they're actually shooting with a gun.
Okay.
Yep, so that's within like
Hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah, if not thousands depending on how their setups are, weather and wind and, you know, a little calculate, you know, little variables that come into play, but shooting walls and then openings on structures and um low spots too. That can be taken into account. Um but yeah, it's it's moving along pretty good, actually.
Well. They're not going to do the drone thing and stuff?
No, no, it's found, it's gonna be
Just groundwork?
Yeah, with the snow on the ground, it's easier just put guys on the ground. Um and, you know, I think they did Iroquois three days, so that's moving pretty good. Iroquois is a good chunk of three days.
They doing that by boat or?
They're they're setting up guns and then walking, walking
Getting access from the people.
Yep, yep, and then there's a guy ahead, door knocking, making sure everyone knows what's going on, why, and uh, you know, getting permission if someone
Um B, proposed land swap with the state of Michigan.
Uh I have to go talk to Denton and make sure they're okay with splitting that. Otherwise, as far as I know, um the DNR is open to swapping and that is the parcel. I don't know if you guys are aware, they're willing to swap the parcel that's south of M-18 that is part of the animal shelter property there. I think all the county has on there is a list station.
The land we're standing to gain by the dam, how much is land is there?
Uh don't quote me on that, but what I wanted them to originally shoot for was five acres.
Okay.
Was the, it's like a 250-foot swath. I think they have a 40-acre parcel there and it's like a 250-foot swath north for like 1,200 feet.
Was there potential for a park there in the future?
For a park. Where we could do some parking and anything else we want to add there.
Okay. Because one of the concerns is going to be, and that's for advisory board new, I guess, are we going to allow access on the new structure?
Yeah, I I think with the amount of fishing that happens there, I I think it would be good. I also think it'd be better to have some angle parking, just it's a little crowded there in the summer.
Yeah, and then if they incorporate a canoe or
Yep.
kayak bypass.
Cause you have to see and race there, run through there and you gotta keep that in mind because that's a big, that brings a lot of people to the area, you know, one weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There's some. Lake St. Helen.
All right, um I got the final draft from Luke for our Eagle pre-application. I just gotta skim through that one more time and then that gets sent out. Um borings for the Geotech have been done out there as well. And then what I plan on doing is we'll set up the the advisory board for St. Helen probably this month and probably have a meeting in January, but I don't foresee much happening out there until I would think spring. And I guess uh we'll also need, I'll talk to Stacy about getting um figuring out when we have a date for a court order to confirm that we can get rid of the winter drawdown because we won't be able to really do design until that's decided.
Any questions?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chase.
Higgins Lake Advisory Board. When to talk about that?
Um I think we're going to go ahead and start setting up the advisory board for Higgins Lake. It's should entail uh people from the SAD district in each township, one a homestead type person and one a non-homestead, and also a representative from each township. And somebody has a delegated authority. Um which at this point is the board, so there would be a representative from the board on that. I don't know, what is it Beaver Township, Beaver Creek?
Beaver Creek.
I don't know how they're going to participate in it, but we are going to definitely make sure they're in the because they have a little chunk of land on it.
Sounds very fair, Rex.
And I think this is pretty much the same format that we use for Holton Lake and Lake St. Helen as well.
Yes.
That way they're all uniform.
We're probably going to advertise it in the paper and put it on our website that we're going to take applications for such.
I think it's important, recommendation that they're all uniform.
Are we looking on uh the permits with the engineering company? So forth on the motions we passed last week, what's going on?
Um Bob, um Frye, I believe, was in yesterday and dropped off a check and I'm not positive if the application's been or the contract has been sent back yet.
Moving forward though, that's the important
Yeah, the contract was actually signed and emailed yesterday to send forth and Bob asked me if I would call the engineer and tell him to take a boot to go in, so.
And we needed some clarification on some of it. I'm sorry, Rex. We needed some clarification on some of it. Oh, what did you need the clarification on? What were? Well, a week ago we asked for some. Oh. Went on to make sure it was addressing the level of the string bed. Right. The opening.
Okay. Unfinished business. We don't have any motions and resolutions. Um whenever you are ready, Michelle.
Move to authorize delegated authority Chase Shepkey to initiate request for split of parcel number 003-012-001-1060 with that in township. Purpose of split request is to create parcel of land south of M-18 for swap with DNR for state-owned land abiding the Holton Lake League level control structure.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. For consistency, okay? From what I understand, okay, we just went over this with Chase here just a few minutes ago. Aren't we supposed to have a period of time before our motions are brought forward to this board? So the public is aware that this is going on? Instead of just bringing it forward all in the same meeting? I mean, this is, I mean, this is what I always hear about why we have to wait and wait and wait. And can that be answered? Ms. Chair. I believe you're correct on that.
You are correct on that. Um I believe the reason being for this one is to try to expedite because Denton Township has a meeting today.
There's always a reason. There's always a reason. My my point is we have lots of good reasons to think, keep things through this the same time in the past and it always seems that exceptions are being made for those that want exceptions to be made. I understand your concern. Um I mean, I don't mind, I'm going to vote for this. I don't have a problem. I understand your concern. Consistency sake, I mean, it's kind of irritating when when things are very, very urgent and then oh, we gotta wait till the next meeting. I understand your concern. And legally, you can do this. That's no problem with it all. That's not the issue.
No, the issue
In this case, we don't have a work session for the late meeting. There's a lot of things that are time sensitive. A lot of things that are time sensitive and I understand that, but but I'm just saying from now on then when things are time sensitive for other issues, we should make an exception, not just, not just this time.
We have made exceptions in the past.
Yes, um so in my controller's report last week, it was in there, so that information was provided and we have actually talked about the need for the land swap over the last year because we don't have the easement.
That does not give, that does not give the public the opportunity though, as everybody always mentions, especially my fellow uh commissioner to the left of me, we need to have the public involved. Okay, Mr. Milburn will, I'm sure will vouch for that.
We do, but this isn't like it's the first time this has ever been brought up, I guess, is the point. The land swap, this is not the first time we've ever talked about the land swap.
I don't have any problem with it.
You asked a question and that's why we're clarifying. It's not the first time the land swap has been brought up. If this was the first time that anybody had ever heard about the land swap, I would be more in line with exactly what you're saying, but it's not the first time.
Well, I'm saying a lot of other issues have been How about at our organizational meeting, I bring this topic up? Okay. And we make sure you're somewhere in place to handle. And I don't see anything wrong with bringing bringing motions forward like this. I don't see anything wrong at all. I just want it to be consistent across the board with other issues that I've brought up in the past. Ah, we gotta wait till the next meeting. That are of urgent nature. We went a whole summer long on Higgins Lake. Right now, the levels on Higgins Lake are almost 12 inches below legal level, six inches below the maximum winter drawdown. Nothing happened last year because we kept delaying. Have to have the public involved. I don't have any problem with that, okay? I just want to be consistent going forward.
Yes.
You're you're
Possibly since it's been brought up, did we possibly postpone this motion to a later date that would be more appropriate with what Commissioner Ostergaard is talking about?
Well, I'm not in favor of that. I I I'm for voting for it now. I just want, I just want to make sure that we are consistent, okay?
And obviously I've seen the motion in front of me for the last few days. Consistency is important. Is there, is there an option that we could could do that would keep in line with what you're talking about? You have a recommendation?
Yes, I have a recommendation that when other matters are brought up that are of an urgent nature, they can be voted on the same day also.
Just put it on next week's regular meeting and then that way Eric Ostergaard, Commissioner Ostergaard's concerns can be addressed with having time for the public to have that information. Um they can look up the parcel, they can see what the proposed split is. Um so that should address that and we have another regular meeting next week.
Yeah.
I would feel comfortable with that, Madam Chair, because what Mr. Ostergaard is proposing that if we did this today in the future, we did the same thing, then we would break in violation of OMA. My my concern is the fact that you brought up a valid point. I'm in favor of the motion, but maybe not at this juncture. And could I ask that we use the word exchange instead of land swap? We like that kind of word.
Your concerns are not unheard, Eric. The chairman and I have had conversations about this same subject. And how we're going to address it in the future.
Okay.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor, so you're either approving it or you're failing it, so that's where you're at. If you want to hold off on it, you have a motion on the floor, so you gotta do something.
So we have to vote?
Yes.
We have to vote and to vote.
You can always amend, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
You know, you can always amend. You have the power as a chair to also be able to pull the motion if you feel uncomfortable with it at this time.
I'm fine. Are we allowed to table it at this time or do we have to vote?
To vote.
Have a motion, you have to vote.
Okay. Well, first of all, in here, I would rather, there's some where it says move to authorize delegated authority Chase Shepkey. I would want it to say Shepkey Consulting LLC because that's actually who our contract is with. As far as discussion lies, to amend it.
I make a motion that we do not accept this resolution as worded.
Not to vote it down.
Yes.
Did we have it first and a second?
Yes.
Okay.
We have an active motion on the floor. If you want to make changes and you want to do that, then vote no. Yep. And we'll bring it back as
Start calling names.
Wait, so you guys just stopped talking? I'm having a pounding headache. Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
No.
Censor. No.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
So much for the God. Well, it's in your Wheaties when you're shaking your bowl, isn't it? I just wanted and I and I really appreciate Mr. Milburn coming forth and bringing up the fact that, you know, we do, we do have to be consistent. We really do.
Um public comment. Any public comment? Okay, with no public comment, this meeting is adjourned and our next one starts at 9:00 a.m. All in favor, say aye. Ben.
No, we don't do it.
December 4th at 9:00 a.m. Okay. Northern Michigan's Children Assessment Center, Rebecca Younger.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just have to finish decorating them. Okay. You know how fast I gotta talk? Yeah, I am.
So thanks for getting me on the agenda today. Uh I just want to give you a quick update on the center and what's going on. Um so I have a nice little presentation. We had our 10-year anniversary this year. Crazy that we've been here 10 years. Um and obviously with the commissioner's support that we've been able to function these 10 years. So I just want to start with saying thank you for that support and your support of the center, the services that we provide. So I thought it would just be a good time to kind of go back and revisit like who we are and what we do. So starting out with our mission. Did I have it up there, Andy? So the mission of the Children's Assessment Center is to foster to foster healing while reducing the trauma of child abuse and neglect while providing prevention, intervention and advocacy to children and their family members. So really our goal with the Children's Assessment Center is to ensure that we are reducing trauma whenever kids are involved in an investigation where there's allegations primarily of sexual abuse. Um so reducing that trauma when they're going through that investigation, assisting law enforcement, working with our prosecutors to ensure that we're building that case when we need to be able to pursue and move forward. Side down. There we go. Um move forward with prosecution. So but with that, we know in order to truly make a difference, uh we need to ensure that we're providing all the services these families need to heal from abuse and try to stop them, that generation of abuse that's that we see ongoing. Oh. Certain. Hey, Andy. I believe the next slide talks about how we believe underreporting occurs, that we know um probably, I want to say 30%, um of the kids that are being abused, we're probably not hearing from. Uh you went way too far. Oh, one more. 30% of sexual cases, nope, go back, there you go, um are not reported to authorities. But you think about that, think of um like all the adults that we hear that are disclosing now that this happened to me when I was a child. Um we see that at the center. I was sitting in the waiting room with a mom, her daughter was he um and having an interview at the center. I was sitting with her in the waiting room, providing her support and she's like, I wish these services were available when this happened to me. We didn't talk about it then, you know, I didn't know who to go to, I didn't know who to tell, or I told and I wasn't believed. Um and these services weren't available, you know, until the CACs really started in the early eighties and I just read we're accredited by National Children's Alliance and read a report that we're over 900 children's advocacy centers in the United States. We have 40 in Michigan, um children's advocacy centers. So so when you think about um that underreport, how important these services are. Thank you. So when you look at um the overall, this is kind of where we've been, you can see in, this is um for all the counties that we serve, that has kind of fluctuated because we started with four counties, we went to five, then we went to six, um so that influences the stats a little bit, but over the 10 years, we've had 3,344 kids come through the center on reported cases, so providing those services. Um you can see during the COVID years, 487, 513, then, you know, we started leveling out again. Um 365, which I thought was interesting. We had one child for every day of the, you know, year. Um and this year, um back down to like that 310. We anticipate there's going to be, you know, right around 300 kids that come through the center every year. Um and then working with our prosecutors, remember we're investigative, so not every child that's coming through the center are resubstantiated abuse. You know, we want to ensure that these kids are being interviewed in a way that we're gathering the most accurate information, that we're interviewing kids in a developmentally age-appropriate. So we're following a protocol by the state of Michigan, um so our forensic interviewers receive that specialized training, so law enforcement um doesn't have to do those interviews and can rely on the center to help conduct the interviews to ensure that we're investigating the cases that need to move forward, but then just providing services to the families that might be coming to the center um because there's other issues going on in the family or other concerns or something that doesn't reach the level that that child's being abused, but what else is going on with that family? So we never want to falsely accuse somebody of abusing a child, just as much as we want to hold those offenders accountable when they are. So when you look at the prosecution rate, um that's actually pretty standard for the state level. We're just shy about 30%. So we, over the years, we've whole, we have worked with our prosecutors to hold 266 offenders accountable for abusing kids. So think of how that's preventing future abuse, preventing future kids from being abused and supporting and preventing that child who was abused by that offender from that further abuse. Um so from a national level, it's right around about 35% of all the cases that are coming through the center that we believe um are being abused that we move forward on and we're just shy of 30. When I started the center 14 or 10 years ago, um we were like less than 10% that our prosecutors were able to move forward on these cases.
I'm making sure you so 100%? Oh, the 100%. 4%?
So there's probably about 60, I would say about 60% that reached that level that either protective services or law enforcement is wanting to move forward the investigation, that there's enough concern that that child is being abused or neglected. Um I don't, I wouldn't say false accusations. Every once in a while, we'll get a child that comes in. Um false allegations are actually less than 3, 5%. Five. It's like 3 to 5% are actual false allegations and that's where that's where a child is actually coming in and saying this happened to me and we're not thinking it's not, um that they maybe are, they're making a false allegation because they're afraid they're going to get in trouble. Um they're wanting to get someone, you know, in trouble. Um so it may be a variety of reasons. So when we're not substantiating abuse is kids that are coming in that maybe their parents alleged that they were being abused, um we're getting
One parent for another.
Could be, yeah.
Child custody.
Right. Yep. And those go both ways. There's a lot of research that supports kids who disclose in a custody case really actually do have a high percentage of being abused because they feel safe and secure. Um a disclosure is coming out once, you know, we had a child who got removed from mom, had been sexually abused in the home, went into foster care, was in foster care for, got removed for neglect and other issues, had been in foster care for about three months, then started disclosing the sexual abuse because she was out of that environment, she felt safe, she felt secure, and now she's able to disclose. And so we see that in the custody cases too. So those are really the difficult cases where it's so important that we work with our partners and our team. So law enforcement, protective services, you know, that's my staff and the prosecutors, you know, really put a lot of time and effort um into those cases. So if, because if kids are being abused, we want to make sure that we're providing them with that environment where they can tell us, but then also we want to make sure that we're interviewing them in a way and investigating that case, that we're not moving forward on those cases that potentially could be custody. What happens
It looks like you've got a really low prosecution.
What happens more, and that's a couple of reasons, we have really young kids being abused. We have, we are investigating three, four and five-year-olds that, you know, there is likelihood and strong concerns that that child is being abused, but it doesn't reach the point where the prosecutor feels like they can move forward.
Or particularly abused.
Most of our cases are sexual abuse. Um our cases that are coming through, about 83%, 83 to 85% are sexual abuse. Yeah. That we are seeing three, five, yes, and some have been witnessed. I mean, it is actually, we have, we've done exams on three-year-olds where we have positive exams, um we're finding evidence, um and yes, very young kids. We've done a, an exam on a two-year-old. These cases are sad.
Both of those are the ones we can find.
Yes. So what happens, yeah, when we have, it's a lot easier, obviously, to prosecute cases with evidence. Unfortunately, these cases have very little Unfortunately, these cases have very little evidence. You know, abuse happens in private, you don't have witnesses. We don't have, and it's really, it's a myth where people believe that if a child's being sexually abused, we're going to have physical evidence, and even on a medical exam, that physical evidence isn't there. A lot of times, because we're not seeing these kids within a five-day timeframe of when the abuse happens. And if we're not doing that medical within the first five days of the abuse, the likelihood of us getting any evidence is, is pretty much nil. So we have no physical evidence, we have no witness, we have no other evidence outside of this child saying that this happened to me, and law enforcement building that surrounding circumstances and surrounding case. So a lot of, a lot of cases that we're moving forward on, there's a likelihood that a lot more of those kids are being abused, but for whatever reasons, and you know, our prosecutors can answer that better than, than I, that it's just not reaching that level for them to feel like, you know, they can issue or move forward on that case. And it could just be, there's a lot of, a lot of not doubt, but being able to convince a jury beyond a reasonable doubt that this happened. And so when prosecutors are moving forward, they have to move forward on cases that they feel like they can, you know, that they can, they can win. Yeah, so, so, so actually, so when you look at the cases that we feel should be moving forward, the cases that we feel like, yes, these kids are being abused, and then we are about at a 30%, you know, prosecution rate with those. The population that we feel like are being abused, that we're not, are sometimes those young kids that we know can't go through the court process. Sometimes we just have parents that say, I'm not putting my child through that. I don't, you don't want my child safe, this abuse isn't happening anymore. They go meet with the prosecutors, the prosecutors are ready to issue, but the parents are just saying, we're not doing it, you know, we're not going through the court process. So we have those cases. We have cases that the prosecutors just feel like this is just not a strong enough case for me to issue on.
Probably they are, but I haven't heard.
I think over the 10 years, ultimately, it's a high percentage plea. The cases that, they take a plea, yeah. If we are going to court and we are in front of a jury, it's less than 5% that we're getting non-guilty, that most of them are being convicted. Yeah, yeah. All right, Andy. So, so what really we are focusing on is that we're providing that safe environment so children, when they are being abused, they can come to the center, feel safe, disclose what is happening to them. And then what our goal is at the center, law enforcement, they're going to continue with their investigation, you know, when we feel like kids are being abused, they're going out and building their case for the prosecutor. If protective services involved, they're ensuring that those kids are safe. If it's a parent abusing a child, obviously, they need to address that, make sure the child is out of the home. If it's a parent who's not protecting a child and is allowing abuse to occur, then protective services is going to be involved, and their focus is making sure, you know, then kids are, law enforcement's going to, you know, build their case for criminal, CPS is going to make sure kids are safe. Our role at the center is to help process that healing. So we want to protect the community, you know, from that future abuse, protect these families, and then help these kids heal. So is there a solution? You know, I want to believe that, yes, you know, eventually, we do see those numbers going down in research support, and we have 10 years under our belt now. And so that's another goal I have now that we have 10 years, is to really dive into some good overall stats on looking at our communities, how many reports were made, how many came through the center, you know, and so looking at that, so the next couple of years, looking at, you know, the impact that the center is having. So also, so because we are seeing a little bit of the reduction of the kids coming through the center, so what does that mean? I'm hoping that what we're doing is working, that we're, you know, working on outreach, we're working with parents to talk with their kids, we are starting to get into the schools to do body safety, we're in Grailing Schools teaching body safety, we want to expand that prevention program. But ultimately too, we know kids are going to get, continue to be abused, and so we have to provide that environment where we can provide services to the most vulnerable. And then by reducing their trauma and getting the support that they need, hopefully, then that's what we want to see is that long-term intervention that we're providing, that we're stopping that generation of abuse. So this is just a slide, over the last 10 years, if you remember when I was here 10 years ago, it was me by myself. If I were to bring the whole center staff now, there would be 12 of us standing up here. So when you look at, I started with just me doing interviews, I was the executive director, I was conducting interviews, I was running the center. 2015, we brought on a family advocate. 2016, we expanded, we brought on a therapist, we, our mental health services, I hired a forensic interviewer to help me do all the interviews, we moved in to hiring a program coordinator to help coordinate the whole program. We started a same program in 2018, so that's where we are responding to sexual assault cases within that five-day timeframe. So if we have a child or an adult who disclosed that they were sexually abused or sexually assaulted within five days, we have a nurse and an advocate that's on call to respond to those needs. We continue to expand our therapist by adding on another therapist, family advocates, administrative assistant. Then when we got the ARPA funds, thank you for the ARPA funds, we were able to expand our therapy, brought on another therapist. And now that we cover six counties, we have an MDT coordinator who's coordinating all of our counties and the teams that we work with. So now we do have a center up and running with 12 full-time staff in the 10 years that we've been here. But with that, our budget continues to grow. So we started at a budget of $64,000, now we're up to a million two. So with that, we probably only, we get about 63% of that from our federal and state. The other 40%, 30 to 40% is from the community. It's the support that we get from all of our counties, the support that we get from our fundraising events, the grants that we write, the local grants that we write, and just the donations that we get. So this really actually, when you look at the success of the center, is the community's success, because we wouldn't be able to do it, you know, without the community's support. So I think that's something that all the commissioners can be very proud of, and being a part of this vision and this mission of the services that we're providing to the kids in our community. So because of that 30%, we know there's a lot of kids out there, like I've mentioned, who still need our services, so we still have to work hard to make sure that those services exist. So it's with the support that we get from the community that we continue to expand services, reach the children who've not been heard, we want to be able to bring those kids to us. So that's really where we have to work with our communities also, to make sure that they are aware of how to report abuse, what a mandated reporter is, so we can ensure that kids are getting to us at need to be. So this is, another one's probably hard to see, Eric, from your point of view, but just looking at the underserved, statistically speaking, one out of eight, one out of 10 children will be sexually abused by their 18th birthday. That has been a stat by National Children's Alliance that, you know, works for, all the CACs report our numbers to them. So when we look at Roscommon County, we have a population of 24,000, just shy of 24,500. When you look at that child population, that's about, we just are shy of 4,000 kids in Roscommon County. And if we look at those kids that are not being served, we have 61% of our kids that potentially could be out there being abused, that are not getting to the services that they need.
It's both sexual.
This is sexual. Yeah, these are sexual abuse cases. We do interview kids on physical abuse allegations. Yeah. Right, because when it reaches that level of criminal prosecution. So our interviews are being conducted, and if it reaches the level where there could be a crime and criminal prosecution, so the severe cases where there's marks, there's bruises, CPS is out there investigating some cases that we're not involved in because it just might not reach that level. It might be poor parenting, discipline that's gone bad, you know, things that CPS is just going to work with the parent on to improve their parenting skills. A very small population that we see also, which we have had in Roscommon County sadly, is kids witnessing crimes. So about, you know, 3% of our kids that are coming through are kids that we're interviewing because they've witnessed domestic violence. You know, domestic violence has been, we've had some homicides, you know, that have happened, where if a child was a witness to those, we would bring him to the center. I interviewed a witness to one of the shootings that happened several years back, some high school kids who were doing some things with a gun, and a kid got shot, you know, and so those witnesses to those crimes came to the center, so we could take their statements. Um, so our vision, our vision is to continue to work with communities to ensure that all children and families have access to these essential services and thrive in an environment that is abuse and neglect free. So the vision that we are continuing to work towards is keeping our community partners involved and ensuring that all of our families have support. So my next slide is, where are we going to go from here? So again, thank you for our Commissioner's support, is our vision for taking over the detention center in the Second Chance area. You'll notice the, everybody could, barriers if your, barriers can get right, the big yellow on the side is walking where Vanessa's office is, is on the other side. So the big conference room, that's where Second Chance was, that big long hallway. So we have been occupying typically just where that green and brown area is. So when I, like I said, when I started, we had four staff in that area, so that one little section up in the corner is where the center has been housed. We're providing interviews, we're providing medicals, we're providing therapy, and now we went from, you know, two staff to 12 staff, so we're having all of our staff in that little office. So we're working with Three Rivers out of Midland. They have, we have our construction, they're working on our construction documents right now. So what our vision is that all that green area will be able to expand and partner with the community to provide all mental health services. So any child who's experienced trauma will be able to expand and hire more therapists and really focus on making sure we're meeting the mental health needs of our community. So that's another partnership that I think we really can strengthen with our communities and with our commissioners, is helping us to be able to fund and support those mental health needs that our community needs. What we'll do is in detention, so that blue and red section is where detention, and then the yellow is where the, I don't know what you call the kids when they stay cells, that was the area where the kids were housed. So we'll be able to move staff over to the yellow area, have nice office spaces, like all sharing offices. The red is going to be our whole medical suite, which will be really nice. Right now, the way, we have one waiting room, our medical suite is tucked in with the rest of our services, we can have a waiting room of kids, they, we have a child here for an interview, we have a child coming in for therapy, and then I get a 35-year-old woman who was sexually assaulted and she needs the same exam. So that red area will be a nice private medical suite that we can respond to all medical services, they'll have a private waiting room, anybody can, they'll have a private door, they'll be able to go through that detention door and have that specially confidential services that they need for sexual assault nurse exams. The blue area will be our investigative suite, so we'll have space for law enforcement there, we partner with the Sheriff's Department, you know, we cover, I have a grant to cover Emily Pellerin's position, so she is 50% covered by the center and works with us as a special investigator on our cases, so we'll have space there for law enforcement, our interviews will be able to expand to two interview rooms, two, two staff that are trained to do forensic interviews, and that will give private area for all the forensic interviews. We'll have plenty of entries, you know, well, this will give us what, four, four different entryways into the center, so law enforcement can have their own private entryway, so they're not entering the center the same way that our families are. A lot of times, law enforcement's walking through the door with families, and kids are like, why are the police here? They're there for a counseling appointment. So it's just going to provide us a better, more secure area to provide all of our services, provide more confidentiality for our families, and I think it's just going to continue to expand and grow the services that we can provide. So we're hoping, we're working on the constructions right now, we're hoping in by maybe January, February, those documents will go up for bid. So obviously, we will do our, we'll work under the federal guidelines and send those out for bids, attempt to try to get three bids for everything, bring them back to the table, work with the community on accepting those bids, we'll bring a community or a committee together to review bids, to accept the bids, and then hopefully, we'll be able to start construction here in the fall. So with that, obviously, it's going to be about a $3.5 million project. Anybody who wants to help write a check for that, I'm more than willing to take that. We are going to, we have naming rights available that we're working with the community on. We do have some pledges already from the community, a couple 100,000 pledges, we're about 750, just shy of a million dollars that I think we've reached, with just some pledges that we've got from some of our investors right now who want to commit to this program. I think people have been really excited to see an old-school building really grow and that we're doing something with it. So again, it's because of the support that we've got from you that we're able to do that, so thank you. The next slide is, I thank you.
What is your ask from us?
My ask right now is to work with us for this next year as we're going through construction. We're probably not at the point right now to take over the deed. So we get great support, I mean, from, from, you know, the IT and the building.
Aside from the support, aside from the support, because I can't see anybody not wanting to support, what kind of monetary request, what is your, what is that ask?
I had that come here with that.
I, I support everything, I, I think this is along the lines of, what is government's job? Government's job is to protect its citizens, that certainly includes our children, more than anybody, really, and everything, but, I mean, this is kind of like a preliminary, you know, what kind of grants are available, is there going to be matching funds available, like with the airport, things like that? Is that, those are the types of things that you're going to be seeking from the feds, the state?
We have written a couple of grants.
How much? How much?
One was for 500,000.
Okay.
And one, I wrote, or wrote one for a million, that one got denied, and so.
I heard the $3 million figure thrown out there, and I go, you know, we don't have that in our whole budget, so, you know, that's why I'm wondering where the money, where is the money going to come from? What are we going to be responsible for? You know, as a community, because I can see the community getting behind this.
Yeah, and that's really what we're, our goal is, to really get the community invested. We are working with some larger foundations, the Kretschy Foundation.
The what foundation?
E R E G E, it's a big foundation downstate that supports building projects. So there's a couple of big foundations that we're working with. A lot of foundations want to see us reach that halfway mark, you know, that, that we have, you know, have the support of our communities, you know, okay, we're at our $2 million mark, then we can go to those foundations and say, can you match this? So we really need to.
So what kind of match are you looking from the community than you've got?
How much have we got from the community right now?
Right.
We're about 750.
Right, okay.
Right now, that we've gotten, yeah.
And you're going to need 3 million?
Probably about 3 and 1/2.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money.
It's.
I mean, and I think, like I said, I think it's important, but.
Right.
I mean, you know, yeah, I'm not.
Can't write that check?
I don't, I, I, not today. But I, I am working on my third million.
Yeah, so.
Well, I gave up on my first two.
Yeah, so we are, you know, we are getting, we have support, you know, from the six counties that we provide. I can drop off to Jody, a building campaign packet, so you can see, you know, how that, how those pledges are being, being made, you know. And, and I think just long-term wise, strategically, like planning and looking is what can, and I'll, you know, when I go and I have six counties, I'll be presenting to the commissioners, is what can we do to partner, maybe, is once we get the building, you know, up and running, is continuing that sustainability support, you know, and how can each county maybe participate and support the center through our mental health services? But, and brainstorming, I guess, if, you know, Jeff, I know, I don't know what the regulations are on, like, and the tobacco money, or the opioid money, or, you know, some of the. some of the other funds that commissioners do have access to, and working with all the controllers on, you know, maybe, is there any other funding available to even help us with the building project that we can take from some of those other, other options that are coming through? But we have to be creative, brainstorm. That's what, when I get through, get through Saturday, everybody decorate your tree, you know, come visit us for Festival of Trees. But yeah, so, so that's to January, really kind of hitting the ground running again and focus on where, where can we reach out and continue to raise money?
How many years have you?
Nine.
Been a while.
Yeah.
I enjoy it.
We started the center in October, so that first Festival of Trees, we didn't participate in, but after that, it's been nine years. Any other questions?
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
2025 Proposed Holiday Schedule. Clerk Register of Deeds, Michelle Stevenson.
Okay, you have before you proposed meeting dates for 2025, listening dates, the second and fourth Wednesday that you currently have in your board rules.
Wasn't included in the packet.
We didn't have it, we didn't have it in the packet. Okay, well, we'll get copies.
Oh, there's some there?
Oh, there's some over here in these packets.
You were supposed to give them.
You know, I'm sorry, you have four meetings or have, what, the day before Thanksgiving and then agenda meeting and then, you know, I'm a busy guy. Anywho, my apologies, but here they are. I cannot even with you guys today, I'm sorry. So, uh, if you will note that, of course, we have on here, this is one of the discussions you need to think, do you want to continue? And all of this is for organizational meeting, this is just providing you with the dates ahead of time, so you can take a look at them. The asterisks indicate that that's the day that a Lake Level Control Structure meeting will occur. So those are the dates. And then keeping in mind that in December, it's keeping in line with going to the first and the third Wednesday based on holidays to avoid trying to work meetings in that right around the Christmas and New Year's. Any questions on that? Great. Number three. Holiday closures for 2025. You've got that, so, yeah, yeah, um, New Year's Day, uh, do you need to approve that? Yeah, so, so you're gonna have to, maybe, on this one, you're either gonna have to approve January 1st before the end of the year, or you're gonna have to approve the whole holiday schedule before the end of the year to make sure that you're approving your close, holiday closures. Because we didn't include it with the year we go through the end of the year.
We should approve the holiday.
Yeah, so we could do this in our next meeting.
When's the organization?
January 2nd.
What time?
9 o'clock. On the Thursday. That's all I have.
Okay.
If there are any questions for me.
Are we gonna add budget and finance meetings possibly to these?
Uh, yes, I needed to get those to Controller Valentino, get the meeting dates to Controller Valentino, and then she's going to take a look at those meeting dates, and then, that's one of the other decisions that the board needs to make, is do you want to have those on the second Wednesday? Plan for those on the second Wednesday since you already have Lake Level Control Structure meeting on the first Wednesday.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? 2025 Proposed Budget Motions.
Next Wednesday at 10 o'clock in order to finalize the 2025 budget. The law states that we have to post for the public hearing two weeks in advance, which is now, and therefore, I wanted to bring the motions that, proposed motions that go with the proposed budget to the Board of Commissioners, so that you can review those. I have had three commissioners come to me with questions already in regards to the proposed budget, so I appreciate that. I do owe Commissioner Censor a list of answers that I am working on for that. But overall, these would be everything that would go into the current budget, detailed out for you, so that way you will be prepared to ask any questions before next Wednesday or at next Wednesday's meeting.
Anybody else have any questions?
Or, is that gonna mean that some of these can be changed in between now and then?
Yes, you'll have to tell me what you're doing at the next meeting, at your work session, your special meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, so we'll discuss all the, all the motions there.
And if you have any specific questions that you want to ask Jody prior to that, you can.
Yes.
For clarification, things like that.
So this is not for discussion today, it's just, this is what we're gonna be looking at?
Yeah, look at these, and if you have questions, get with Jody or bring them to next Wednesday's meeting, so that on the 18th, we're ready to finalize everything. If you, especially if you need clarification and stuff, yep. I don't know if these, it's handy, absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, with no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned, and our next one starts at 10 a.m. All in favor, say aye. Roll call, please. Astor Green. Russo. Wilson. Enter. Here. Our presentation of the 2024 Russ Common County Person of the Year.
I'm the guy that made it in the snow.
Right. So the resolution, a tribute for Herbert Herb S. Weatherly, Russ Common County Person of the Year, 2024. Whereas Mr. Herbert Herb Weatherly, a U.S. Navy veteran and retired engineer from Fisher Body, chose to purchase property on Higgins Lake, Garrish Township, Russ Common County in 1976, for the purpose of spending summers enjoying the beauty and relaxation our county offers. And whereas, after a decade of spending time in both Higgins Lake and Flint, Michigan, Herb and his wife, Trina, chose to make Russ Common County their permanent residence in 1985, enjoying the higher quality of life that few other communities could offer. And whereas, Herb believes strongly in actively contributing to his community, providing this through numerous volunteer positions, including being a longtime active member of the Global Methodist Church, where he serves on the Endowment Committee, Finance Committee, and TEC Committee. And whereas, Herb's character and work ethic led him to take an active role in his township and community, serving 12 years as trustee on the Garrish Township Board, where he earned a reputation for making choices aligned with the best solutions for all residents. And whereas, he willingly applied for an opportunity to further support his community, township, and county by being elected as a delegate to the County Convention for the Republican Party, a role that Herb has served in for over 20 years. And whereas, Herb sensed a civic responsibility and deep appreciation for Higgins Lake, led him to numerous support and leadership roles, including active advocacy for the health of Higgins Lake and decades of active membership in the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, for which he currently serves as secretary. And whereas, his involvement in the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association led to greater involvement in local government, attending the Russ Common County Board of Commissioners meeting since 1988, earning him the honorary title of the sixth commissioner. Whereas, Herb Weatherly is an exemplary community member, shining as a great example of citizenship for his service and dedication to numerous and varied organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved that Herb Weatherly of Russ Common County, Michigan, be honored, bestowed, and awarded the Russ Common County Person of the Year Award for 2024.
Thank you all. Get in the middle there, man.
Okay.
Hey, you got a front. I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Herb. Thank you.
See you, church on Sunday.
You gotta buy us all lunch, man.
Herb, I'll get that 100 bucks from you later.
Approval of the agenda.
Move Adam Scher.
Discussion. Roll call. Silver.
Yes.
Center. Yes. Russo.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda, which includes Class As in the amount of $547,259.17 and claims and accounts in the amount of $128,740.71, correspondence with the MAC Legislative Update, and monthly department reports from the Russ Common County Jail Report for October and November, and our Administrator and Controller Report. Have a motion? Let us second. Hey, clerk, call roll, please.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Yes. Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Clerk Register of Deeds update. Oh, spent a whole seven days. Not even really correct. Just continuing to work on, out of the month stuff, year-end stuff, we have received reimbursement from the state for, from Bureau of Elections, for the early voting election stuff, the grant reimbursement. So I'm just waiting for that, so I can get that applied to all of the accounts that it needs to be applied to. And then I also have the deadlines for round two of the grant reimbursement. I also have the funds from the August primary early voting that is, the townships are being reimbursed by the state, which was $29,000 for early voting election inspector workers in August. I now have to do all the paperwork for the second round of grant reimbursement and for the November early voting wages. So the state had pledged to reimburse the early voting election inspector wages for August and November of this year. What that's gonna look like moving forward, not really sure. The rumor mill, Russ Common Area Public Schools is planning to possibly have an election next year to try to pass their bond proposal again, because it failed in November. So we very well could have a, an election, but they will be responsible if they hold a special election, and it's not in coordination with a state or county, state, county, or federal election, they're very responsible for all of the cost of that. So that is where, with my budget for 2025, when there's not a lot of money budgeted in there, because if there is a special election, it is reimbursed. So unless you're planning to have an election next year, you need to tell me, so I can put that in my budget. But that's all I have, there's not a lot. Yes.
How did everything go? Can I give us an overall synopsis on all of the new early voting, all the new processes? And are these grants that you're applying for, are they, are they gonna be, have to be done every single year? Or, you know, explain that a little bit.
So early voting, as I mentioned, last month after the election, was highly participated in for November. It was significantly more than what we had in August.
It went well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, yep, it went very well. It wa, I was just thinking about this yesterday, and I was like, it, it was really very smooth. You know, there was, there was hiccups in the election, there always is, there's always something, because you can never play, because it's never the same thing. Never gonna have the same thing. But it went very well. So one of the things that we're gonna have to have a meeting with the clerks, with Russ Common County, the township clerks, in this next year to determine, okay, do they want to continue with the seven early voting sites that we currently have established? Or, because this year with the implementation of it, there was money promised to help fund the implementation of early voting, so that's where the grants came in to purchase the, the equipment and the materials that were needed for early voting. The state, part through the grant, purchased the tabulators and express votes and laptops and things like that. And then anything that we wanted above that or thought that we needed above that.
And that'd be used for future elections, the equipment that was purchased?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, but it's, and it's just for, so it's like for early voting. And because they have to have a separate, a separate tabulator for early voting, so the tabulator that's used for early voting is not the tabulator that's used on Election Day. That tabulator is secured and it's not closed out until election night, when the polls close. So, um, yeah, so they keep the equipment, the equipment's theirs, but each early voting site has their equipment.
So you won't have to apply for any more grants, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And that, I, I just wondered if you have to do that every year or every election?
No, they haven't promised any money passed this year.
Okay.
So there's no help. And so that's what the townships have to decide. They have to decide if they're going to continue as separate, seven separate sites. So obviously, we have 11 townships, 13 precincts, so some of them have municipal agreements where they are combined with other townships. So there may be consideration amongst them to reduce that even more, or fiscal responsibility, and to save money. What that's gonna look like moving forward, if they do that, they've gotta send notices, are their voters gonna be happy about it? So those are some, some challenges that the townships are gonna have to look at when they're looking at their budgets and moving forward. And, you know, the voters, the voters are who voted for this. They're the ones that implemented it, they're the ones that wanted it when they passed proposal two in 2022. And so, but without really knowing the financial effect of it, I guess. And so we've, we did have such a high turnout in November, so now in 2026, you say, oh yeah, you used to be able to go vote early voting at your township or a nearby township. Well, what's that gonna look like in 2026? I'm not sure yet. We have to have meetings, but we could have fewer early voting sites, unless funding is available to help cover the expenses for it. Because it was 29,000 in wages, and that was just with the state, the state would only reimburse up to $15 an hour. So depending on what each township approved for paying their election inspectors, depended on how much was reimbursed. So if they weren't paying their election inspectors $15 an hour, they were, and they were paying them 12, that's how much the state reimbursed for. But that reimbursement was only promised for this year, for these elections. So August was 29,000. I think after August, they kind of pared down a little bit for November with some of their workers, but then they had a much higher turnout in November. So I don't have what the numbers are yet or what they're requesting for reimbursement for November, but I will be working on that. So the deadline for that is mid-Jul, or mid-January. But, um, it's gonna be interesting to see where we go moving forward, but it definitely was what we had, on behalf of our turnout.
You, you would think that- You, you would think that the reason it ran so smooth is because if you have a problem initially right off the bat with people coming in and casting their ballots, it doesn't happen on election night when everybody's under the gun. And so is, is that probably part of the reason is, because if there were any problems, they got sorted out right away?
Um, well, I would like, think it's because we have pretty awesome clerks in Russ Common County.
That's true too.
And led by a pretty awesome county clerk, but I'm just saying. Anyway, and, but yes, it, I think that helped is with more people having more foot traffic during the early voting, it wasn't such a big audience.
Did we have, did we have any issues at all at the start? We had some problems and they got fixed really quick?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, everything ran smooth right off the bat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't, are you talking about early voting or election day?
Early voting.
Yeah, early voting. Yeah, they did not have the challenges they had in February. And in August, I'm trying to remember if they had anything, it was pretty, it was pretty smooth. A lot of the kinks were worked out with the trial, the trial townships in November of last year. And then February, they learned a lot in February with that election.
Right. You just don't have the pressure. I would think that the pressure would not be on with early voting as it would be all on Election Day and everything being crammed into one small period of time.
Yeah.
As opposed to being spread out over a longer period.
It, it definitely helps and it's definitely a benefit, other than, you know, there is that pressure because if you, the, the, like, the kind of poll book that they're working with during early voting, when you update that, so you update a voter's history, that voter's history is updated right then.
Mm-hmm.
You, if you make a mistake, it's a, it's a deal. Or deal.
Now, the ballots, they're all cast ahead of time, but they're not run through the machine until Election Day, is that how that works?
They're put in the machine, so people come in and they vote, it's just like Election Day. You go into a booth, you vote your ballot, you put it into the tabulator. The only difference is, is that at the end of the night, they don't hit closed polls and tabulate that report. If that's not done until Election Night, so that's.
And then all the ballots are safely stored somewhere, I'm assuming, sure.
They're secured, yep. Yep, they secure them every night, they take them out of the tabulator and they have to put them in a bag and secure them because they have to keep them sorted by day.
By day, that's why I was gonna, that was the next question I was gonna ask.
They're sorted by day, and if there's multiple jurisdictions in one early voting site, they can choose to keep them together by day, or they can take the time at the end of each day and sort them by precinct by day. So if they don't do that, then if there's a recount, then they're gonna have to go in and sort them anyway, so it's just a matter of.
Do you have an issue with that going on at one of the?
At Russ Common County.
Okay.
Not here.
Yes.
Is there a special election in mayor, mayor August, Michelle?
Don't know yet, they have to file paperwork.
And I wanna cut, piggyback what you said, we have a great group of dedicated elected officials, the township level and obviously the clerks. Thank you so much.
Yes, and we have a few new township clerks, so that's gonna be, um, it'd be interesting.
Justin Benson was on TV this morning talking about.
Did you run into any issues at all with people trying to vote twice or thought that they hadn't voted or, you know what I'm saying? Did, did an absentee and then tried to come in and vote?
No, we had a fun fact that, um, one of the challenges we did have were people were dropping off their ballot, their AV ballots in the wrong drop boxes. So there was, I know, Dent Township had received a couple that were for Markey Township.
Well, they put them in the wrong drop boxes.
They're not even near each other.
Right, but, but that's what I'm saying, they put them in the.
The voter put it in the box.
That's what I'm saying, voter put it in the wrong box.
Yeah, so that, how did you not know where you got your ballot from? Where you go vote? That's where your drop box is, is where you go vote. So, so you know, because there was.
So what, what happened to those ballots? Did they get relocated?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, they were forwarded over to the proper clerks. So, I mean, there was even the situation, Garrish Township, where two voters who had AV ballots downstate dropped their ballots off in the drop box at their, where they were located downstate, where they had their mail too, because they're obviously residents up here, and.
They didn't know they had to mail them back up here.
I don't think this was their first time voting AV.
Okay.
I think people are just, I, I don't know. But anyhow, those ballots got up here because, um, Secretary of State employees went and picked them up and brought them up here and returned them.
Physically did that?
Yes.
They had to be expensive.
Two ballots. That was how the secretary.
They couldn't send them in the mail?
That was, no, because they wouldn't have gotten here. This was the day, the day before the election.
Oh, okay.
They would not have made it here, so the clerk had contacted those people and let them know that they had to come and vote in person if they wanted their votes to count.
Well, the people wanted that, the people had to bring them back up here, not, not a state employee?
No, 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 no. They were told they had to, they couldn't give, their ballots can't be returned back to them.
Okay.
So that township clerk downstate had the ballots, she could not return them to them. They could put them in the mail, but they weren't going to get here by Tuesday.
Okay.
So the Bureau of Elections contacted our clerk and said that, um, a Secretary of State employee will be delivering them. So they sent one employee down, picked up the ballots, who met another employee, and then that employee delivered them to the township clerk up here.
It's awesome.
Sounds expensive.
You want, you correct me if I'm wrong, they wanted to secure Jane of custody?
Yes. So, but.
Did this, could, could that have happened with a number of counties downstate and then they just brought them here to Russ Common and then over to Crawford and do that?
This is the only one I'm aware of.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I, I'm probably asking.
I thought that was a lot, I thought that was a lot of effort. It's like, okay, at what point do we hold people responsible for the decisions they make? That's all I have, sorry, it's a long period. Public comment. Any public comment? Visitors, any visitors? We have no unfinished business, no new business, so we're on to motions and resolutions. You needed to say that before the approval of the agenda.
No, no, unfinished business.
Yeah, we were supposed to add that.
Oh, you're supposed to add that, okay, I don't know, it's not that important.
Can you do it under your comment? Okay. Motions and resolutions. Number one, move to authorize Emergency Manager Vanessa Varner to enter into a five-year contract with Genesis Protect for the purpose of providing a comprehensive mass notification system for a total cost of $23,864.35.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Milburn.
Yes.
Astor.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to reappoint Catherine Methner to Economic Development Committee for a three-year term beginning December 4th, 2024 through September 30th, 2027.
So move, Madam Chair.
Discussion.
Excellent, Kennedy.
Roll call. Russo.
Yes.
Astor.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, move to appoint Julie Crick to the E911 Authority Board as an employee representative for a three-year term beginning December 4th, 2024 through September 30th, 2027. Second. Discussion. Roll call. Wilson.
Yes.
Astor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Number four. Move to authorize, as approved and requested by the E911 Authority Board, discretionary pay, see attached. Sorry. E911 dispatchers that served our dispatch center between May 1st, 2024 and September 1st, 2024, throughout which they performed overtime duties above and beyond normal expectations, allowing for continuation of operations. Approval of attached discretionary pay does not constitute a change in contract agreement.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
I'd like to focus, ask my colleagues to focus on the verbiage, they performed overtime duties above and beyond normal expectations, allowing for continuous continuation of operations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? The only thing I'm gonna say is that I, I still struggled with this right up until this morning, and it's not because I don't feel that the employees deserve it, I think it's just because of how it all came about and how it all came down. That being said, if there's no further discussion, roll call. Oh.
Yeah, I, I did too, as we talked about this, you know, at the last meeting, I really struggled with it also. But since it is in their budget and they have the money in their budget and it's not gonna burden the taxpayers anymore, and the money is there, you know, I, I, I think this is something that we should vote on in a positive way. Our emergency management people are real critical of this county. And like I said, I did struggle with it, but after a lot of thought, I really think that we need, we need to support these folks. Thank you.
Roll call. Wilson.
Yes.
Astor.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, move to authorize Animal Control Program Director DeeDee Mendick to enter into agreement with Bonham Heating and Cooling for the purpose of full replacement and upgrades to existing HVAC system and controls. Total project cost not to exceed $420,000.
Over.
Second. Discussion. Roll call. Milburn.
Yes.
Astor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Russo.
Yes.
Number six, move to adopt resolution number 2024-12-01, recognition of Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau as a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming licenses. Recognition of Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau as a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming licenses. Whereas the Houghton Lake Tour, Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau wishes to offer contests that will further increase tourism throughout Ross Common County, and whereas the state of Michigan requires that any entity requesting permission to operate a contest or fundraiser submit a qualification application with a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming, recognizing the Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau as a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming licenses. Therefore be it resolved that the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners formally recognizes the Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses. Second. Discussion.
Yes. Were we given any evidence that this is the case? They're a nonprofit?
I wasn't giving any.
I guess I didn't hear your question.
I was asking if we had received any evidence that they are in fact a nonprofit. I mean, I could assume they are.
Yeah.
But if we're gonna pass something like this, maybe we would wanna consider seeing evidence, like their IRS form or something?
Well, nobody really funds it. We don't fund it and I don't think.
It'd be real simple to look.
If only Gary O'Deff funds it, I've never seen them come across on the township.
No, it's not about funding, it's about, we're saying, yes, they are a nonprofit organization in our county.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe that would be really easy, just look it right up on the internet. I mean, Jody could probably do it in two minutes.
I'm doing it right now.
Oh, there you go. Great minds think alike, right?
We should have probably asked for that from her when she was here presenting during the work session.
Bring it up before.
I believe they are.
Been down there a few times.
Man, our internet's slow. One, five.
Yeah, because to be a nonprofit, you have to file form every year with the IRS, a whole ball of wax. I do, I, I do it for two organizations, two nonprofits.
501(c)(3).
I'm sorry?
501(c)(3).
Well, that's a different, that's, there's a lot of different nonprofits. There's a lot of different types, there, there's nonprofits that you can have tax deductible, you can make donations to that are tax deductible, and then other nonprofits that are just nonprofits. Lots of different nonprofits.
You don't see them in the IRS database.
Should be in the Michigan. For example, I've got, I've got Citizens for Higgins Lake League of Levels, that's a nonprofit. I have to register that with the state. I've got my Birch Road Dock Association, that's a nonprofit, I have to register that with the state. It's all on, it's all on the state websites. And if you do IRS EZ postcard report for the nonprofits, there's no, you don't see any money anywhere. It's under $50,000, I believe, is the, is the limit on charitable nonprofits, or not charitable, but just nonprofits, you don't even have to report anything.
You made me listen to this corporation.
What's the name of the entity?
Tourism Bureau.
Houghton Lake.
Tourism Bureau. They're listed under something else, I'm not showing them.
Houghton Lake.
Tourism Bureau.
I don't see any records found with, by that name.
Yeah, I can either, and I just searched Houghton Lake.
Really?
You can vote on it and then S.
Maybe they're illegal.
She's brand new, so she may be operating under the assumption that this is. That they are.
Commerce or something, maybe.
Correct.
Well, she has to set up a nonprofit.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's nothing to do, you can do it in an hour.
Right. So we can vote and then, yeah.
So we can approve it with her?
Correct.
Yeah, you can.
You can, but.
Roll call, please. Astor.
Not at this time.
Wilson.
No.
Censor.
No.
Russo.
It was not safe.
Correct. We'll just reach out to her and ask her for the documentation.
We wanted to make sure this motion doesn't reflect on her integrity as a person.
No.
There isn't one?
Oh, okay.
She had no negative reflection of her.
Well, it's not even the right language in here, so we would have had to change it anyway.
Yeah, here it is, Houghton Lake Area Tourism and Convention Bureau, is that it?
Well, that'll have to be revised.
Do I have to retype it off with the correct name?
And everything in there?
Yep.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on just a second. I'm missing Anita Shepherd?
Nope.
I'm sorry?
Alma, but yeah, I think Anita used to be.
And 9091 West Lake City Road, Suite E, Houghton Lake. President David Klaus? Secretary Kurt?
I don't know if any of those are even valid anymore, if you're right.
Yeah, they're all officers. Yeah, they're all officers and directors and incorporate, well, they need to be updated.
Right. But we'll reach out to Alma. She's new, so we'll reach out and verify.
Yeah, you got a whole bunch of directors, nonprofit.
Yep. Um, yes.
This doesn't, this doesn't have any negative reflection on Alma.
No, not at all.
No, it was incorporated in nineteen ninety-four.
Committee reports. Commissioner Astrogun.
I have none.
Milburn.
No.
Commissioner Russo.
Only been a week.
I attended a, a agenda meeting last Wednesday after a normal meeting and um, I also did go to, it's not really a committee, but I did attend the new commissioner's school this past Monday down in Frankenmuth. It was a nice refresher course and a few things were brought up, um, new dealings and policy updates and OMA's and things like that. Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, um, I attended Northern Michigan Counties Association meeting the other day here. Um, two things came to light. One, it was announced at that meeting by a member of MAC that there was no funding for the materials management planning. So I reached out to our state person, Daniel Droste, and asked him to advise me on how we move forward. He sent back an email and this is quote, this is not true. The funding is in place, but the mechanism to get it further is not in, is, they don't have it in place. So in other words, he's saying the money's there, but we have no way to give it to you at this point. Now, take that for what it is. Please advise me how to move forward with this project. My, I'd say, since we are close to presenting a work plan that we continue on through that process, that's at the point, I believe, where we can ask for some money. You understand the ramifications of it?
We'll talk later. I, I need to know a little bit more. I don't want to get into it right now.
We may not get reimbursed for all the money we spend on this.
Um.
Unfortunately, we don't have an option.
It's not any concrete at this point.
So in other words, the money's been placed. It's just the funding mechanism to get it to us isn't in place.
That's pretty serious, so.
It could be, you know, it depends. Anyway, so much for that one. You want me to keep moving forward with that project? I will keep moving forward. Um, another thing was announced and I see in our controller's report that it has proceeded further. We can kind of expect a statewide septic code. Commander Lansing before the end of the year.
Really? That's great news. That'll take the pressure off all of our local officials.
It's great news unless you gotta pay the bill to have your septic inspected.
Well, you should.
I know of one case where it's gonna cost you two to ten thousand dollars if they haven't inspected.
Yeah, but they're dumping garbage in the ground. They're dumping sewage in.
No, no, this is a septic system for a house. Because it is buried eight feet deep when they built the new construction. But I'm just saying, we have citizens that are gonna fall into that category. It's, it could get very expensive for some of our citizens.
The, the state of Michigan has more lakes in it than any other state in the Union and we're like one of the few, if only, state that doesn't have a statewide septic ordinance.
That's correct.
All right, let's stay on task.
Just wanted. Thanks.
Board comment.
There we go.
Commissioner Astrogun.
Um, we were talking about this earlier and, and I think it's, I think it's important to be able to pass a motion during the same meeting that it comes up, if it's of importance. Uh, normal uh, rules of parliamentary rules say that you can do that. I think many of my constituents are extremely frustrated when they put us in action and it told me, why can't you, why do you have to always wait two weeks? And then something else comes up, then you have to wait another two weeks. So I think it's gonna be important and it's gonna be, if it's on the agenda, it can be viewed by the public. We're not doing anything behind the scenes. If it's not on the agenda, we're, we're all being taped here in this meeting and people can view what, what we do. We were elected by our constituents and we're representative republic. They give us the responsibility to have enough knowledge and foresight to make good decisions and make motions and be able to pass them the same day. So in the future, I'm not gonna be here, okay? In the future, I would, I would think that the board would want to put in their new rules that i- if it's something that they can put on the agenda before it happens, that it, that, that that be done and that be adequate notification to the public that that's gonna be handled. So if someone's concerned enough out there and they're looking on our agenda and they see that motion, they can make comment on it uh, before the, before it's passed in the, in the, uh, when the agenda's being adapted and so forth. So I think, I think it's important for the effectiveness of this board in the future to be able to pass motions the same day, just as we did the one this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn.
Gentle reminder, tomorrow, Thursday at ten o'clock, Michelle, Jody and Dave, myself are supposed to meet at the airport. We'll have to stay tuned to see how this thing is, is gonna shake out with the snow. And also in, in response to my, my colleague to the right, transparency is a key. We must act in the public concern. I am not in favor of, I think motions should be vetted. Obviously, if there's an emergency, we need to act on it quickly. But if, in a normal case of business, no, no, motion should always be vetted. It's imperative. I can't say this strongly enough. We must always vet the motions to the public. If we have to hold a special meeting in regard to that, we will hold a special meeting. It's really not convenient for us. We work for the people. It's convenient for the people to be notified. That's how I feel. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate your comments.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Russo.
Um, the only thing that I had is that um, yesterday when I talked about Fry, he was dropping the check off. We talked about that a little bit earlier and just to remind everybody about the meeting next Wednesday.
Commissioner Wilson. Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye.